Also, people can call in and just wait for a nice quiet spot to state your public comment. So we'll start out with Christmas Stroll information. Sherry Weiner.
Christmas Stroll. This is our 30th year.
Wow.
We're pretty excited about it. Yeah. I'm the Executive Director of the Red Lodge Chamber, and I work with a kind of beautiful committee to put this event on each year. We're really excited this year because, as you all know, last year was canceled. It seems like there's a lot of anticipation this year to really have people be able to get out and have some fun. Traditionally, this event is based on the vendors, business people downtown giving back to the local communities. They offer up their tasty treats and invite people downtown to shop and enjoy. And we've enhanced it by closing off the street so it's safe for kids to run around. We have the horse and wagon rides with Santa, fire pits outside, people roasting marshmallows. You guys own all the games. And in preparation of this, I've contacted the Montana Department of Transportation. They've agreed to close the street off. I have insurance. I have all the permitting. I've submitted a street plan to keep everything safe. What I need from the city is you've always been gracious enough to help. There is a little bit of extra garbage duty, and Mr. Bushnell always helps me with the street closing logistics. So I'm hoping you'll be able to do that again for me this year as well. Any questions?
Any questions, for sure. Yes. Historically, my understanding and recollection of the state street thing is that they are happy to provide that, and what they generally just want is a statement from us that, yep, we're good. Do they have enough of the history? They didn't ask for that this year, or do you need something from us that says, yep, you're good?
If I verbally tell them that, yep, we're good, they're okay with that. I don't need anything in writing.
I'm one, yep, you're good.
Any other questions, for sure? Questions from the public? Questions from the public? Thank you, Sherry. You have our blessing.
Thank you.
Resolution 3590, resolution renewing the tourism business district. This is up for discussion now. Yes, Teresa.
I'm just double checking. Nothing's changed since, and I know we've seen this another time, and it looks great.
No, nothing has changed. The only thing that is different from the resolution of intent for this would just be the addition of, once we've gone through the protest period, that there was not significant enough armor, and that's all that was added, basically, a repeat of the existing resolutions that were working under now, basically.
Dave, so just to clarify, what we did before was a resolution of intent, hey, we're gonna do it? Now we're doing it.
But nothing's changed. Thank you.
Any other comments from the table? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? We'll move this forward. Ordinance 835, second amended rules and regulations governing water and wastewater services. This is up for discussion. Teresa, do you want to give us an overview?
Yeah, so I think I'd like to put this in context as a start. So the city keeps the rules and regulations governing water and wastewater service, the city Red Lodge. There haven't been changes since, I think it was to the 835, first amended in 2000, and before that, it was created in 1998. So the rules and regs, the only minor change that I think has come along is the charges or the fees that were passed, I think it was two years ago, maybe three, so that discontinuance of service is not a termination, that you still pay a basic fee even if you turn the water off. So it required, even for that, a go-through of the rules and regs, and they didn't get changed. But then I was talking with Jim Bushnell. We meet almost typically every Thursday if there's not an emergency, which there usually is. But understanding that some of the things that happen and that would cause a waste of resources as well as drive up costs at public works, and then talking with the staff at the office also reinforced the need for some changes, but it was time to basically revisit rules and regs. And what I found in there, so that we didn't have a number of different scenarios and confusion occurring among different service requests that are made for the water and wastewater utility. So started looking through the rules and regs and noticed that there were a number of definitions that could be clarified that would help with the practice of serving customers versus users and really defining who they are, what kinds of services are available to either/or, that things can't be turned off without the property owner knowing, number one was the big one, and that not everyone that's a resident, a tenant, would have the right to come in and say, discontinue the service, or change the billing back to the owner. The owner should have authority to do that, the property owner, because they don't always know. So there's an awful lot of wasted energy and activity around some of the confusion. So what's in here is definitions are three new, not four. I think one of the iterations had four and had been removed, so that should read three, actually. And then I don't know if anybody had time to read through it or had any questions, but basically, this is just bringing the rules and regs up to date and then defining who a customer is versus a user. They were used interchangeably, and then removing the possibility of their user, which is now a commercial tenant, not a residential tenant. The user is able to set up billing to their name if they are a commercial tenant, but not every resident that is a tenant can come in and now request those changes. Property owner is responsible for the direct billing.
Questions from the table?
Teresa's worked very hard on this. It looks great.
Good job, too.
Dave?
I do appreciate all the effort that's gone into it from reading it. Unfortunately, when I do go read through it, I think clear as mud is probably how I felt. And that's not an indictment on you or your efforts at all. I just, there were parts that I was still wondering, I captured a couple of things just now as you were talking, concerns with the water being turned off without the proper owner, property owner knowing, and that's something I didn't quite pick up within here. And then I think when you had just introduced this before, you had indicated that one of the drivers, or at least as I understood it, is that we were kind of easing the load on staff, or taking them out of the position of an enforcement or something.
Property management, still true.
Yeah, property management.
And you did not read about a, what was the thing you said before that you, you didn't read about that in here because that's what we're trying to avoid.
Right, and so I was just kind of looking, so as I went through the terms, there was a couple of things that were confusing to me, and I guess this is one of those, I feel bad that you've had to do this on your own. And we can all give you individual feedback, but a couple of the things that I noticed, for instance, you talked about not turning off without the proper knowing, which isn't what I got in here, but you had said that, there were two things that I saw that were in conflict. You said that a renter, for instance, could not get it turned off.
Right.
But at the same time, you said, if it doesn't get paid, it's going to get turned off. And so a renter can, can in essence, get it turned off, but I didn't see the part where it says about the property owner knowing.
A renter can get it turned off if they're delinquent and paying their bill.
That's what I'm saying. So they can, in fact, get it turned off by non-payment.
Not to a service.
No.
So I'm not going to state it here. It does say it here, right? And this is lifted right out of the existing rules and regs. It does say in here that there is a procedure around the first warning, delinquency of 30 days, 60 days, and then if they're not a commercial tenant, then the property owner is notified, and they get 10 days to respond to it because the commercial, or the customer, the property owner, is ultimately responsible, so they need to know what's headed their way because somebody's delinquent. Right?
Okay, yeah, and that makes sense to me. That's just not necessarily what I read. Down in the information to be provided, and it talked about the application, one of the things that can be provided is, that qualifies as proper identification, is a birthday, which I thought was strange. I have a birthday.
Well, that's out of the existing, so if you want to scratch it, they need a government ID, which is going to give a birthday.
So there are several things that I thought were clean. I just, I had enough individual one-off questions and concerns that, I guess, what I would really love to see is with the mayor's blessing, have the council reinstitute a public works committee so that you've got three people that can get together and work on this, rather than you having to do this all in your brain.
Can't we do that without, I mean, can't we just, I can, I can ask somebody to sit down and go through it right now?
We can, I just don't want to create tension in doing so.
I think you've already done that, actually.
Created tension, or? I apologize, not my, my asking?
No, 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 we're having a discussion, it's okay. I'm good, Tom. It's expected. I mean, this is what we do, we discuss, right? So Dave, this is why I matched up, when you go into a, when you, when you want a service of the wastewater and water utility in the city right now, you walk into the office and you ask for, I want to set up a service account, right? Number one, you can't turn on a service without an account. So you come in, and you get a form, and you fill it out. Well, that form today is very vague, it's very ambiguous, and that's possibly because so is the existing rules and regulations, right? So it causes a lot of chaos. It causes a lot of confusion among customers and users as well, right? So if we define that in the rules and regs and we match the definitions in the service request, they can check off which services that they're coming in for. Coming in to establish a service account, I'm coming in to terminate my service account, coming in to set up billing, and then they're going to have been identified as a commercial tenant at that point, and if they're not, they're going to be told, you can't establish billing, it's the property owner's responsibility. Now, a commercial tenant could also be a nonprofit. It's somebody that's established in a property, doing business of some kind, other than residential, other than housing somebody, right?
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
I'm just curious why we're doing it this way, because it seems backwards. When you have an account, you know, even in college, I had to call and get the cable in my name, I had to call and get the power in my name, I had to call and get the water and sewer in my name, I had to call and get the garbage in my name. The property owner has nothing to do with that. And we have a lot of property owners that go through property management companies, and they don't want to deal with that. So how are we going?
So, and that's a good question. I wondered about that myself, as this was soaking in for the weeks we've been waiting on it, but I wondered if a commercial tenant could also be a property manager. If the, if the property owner, maybe that's something we could explore. If the property owner has a property manager for several properties, I don't know if that would work or not, but that's a good question. So they had a contract with the owner to manage these properties, could the property manager be the user as a commercial tenant?
The property manager can't be the spokesperson for the property unless there's a contract between the property manager and the owner.
Right, it would be something like, most of your commercial tenants have a commercial contract or lease with the property owner. So it's the same type of relationship, maybe, maybe a property manager could be considerably a commercial tenant and/or user, so they could manage billing.
The property manager would be referred to as the agent of the property owner.
Well, and that's fine, I'm just saying, can we add that to the definition as a user, right? So I don't know if that works or not.
I think it would work.
Excellent.
Yes, Dave? So my experience is kind of in line with what Jody said, that, you know, when I moved and got, you know, went and had all utilities in your name. On the flip side of that, what I have also had as a landlord before is I had an agreement with utility that if I did have a tenant that was behind, rather than shutting it off, they transferred it back to my name, but again, I would be notified. And so a lot of that was, A, you didn't want utilities being turned off in your properties, some of that was just protection of the property, and some of that was because of the cost involved.
So that's what's happening today. Residents are coming in and saying, turn it on, turn it off, they're billing to me, turn the billing to them, and then the property owner doesn't even know that the tenant moved out.
But that's not anything what I just said.
But, well, I thought it was.
So let me try again. What I did is I had an agreement that said, dear city, my renters are required to come in and establish an account and go through whatever that process is when they do that.
And who has to check that?
Transfer that into their name.
Who has to check it?
I know that the next week, when I get a bill or I don't get a bill. If I don't get a bill, that means they successfully.
Who would the city have to check that relationship?
It didn't involve anything with the city.
How are they authorized to set up that service? They are with the power company and the cable company, I mean, it's not any different. I mean, it's just given, I mean, if you want to have them bring in a copy of their lease, I guess you could do that. Who, who could do that? What I'm getting at is our city staff are the ones that are left holding the bag and acting as property managers and understanding who owns what, what the relationship is, is it legitimate? They're becoming, in effect, property managers.
And I agree that we don't want that onus to be on them. What I have dealt with from both sides is one of two agreements. Either, hi, here's my lease, I'd like to put the property in my name, I think that's a good document as far as presentation. Basically, I'm just saying, send the bill to me. But as a landlord, there was a separate agreement we had that said, if at any point they are delinquent and don't pay their bill, rather than shutting it off, you send the bill to me now instead, and I will take care and address it.
That already happens today.
Yeah, that's the way to say it.
That's exactly right.
And that's how all utilities work.
So in that case, so your renter didn't pay the bill for two months, he's got two late charges, he's got a deal, so you're saying, send the bill to me and I will pay that, and we'll be good again. Late charges at all.
Yeah. That's what the deposit's for.
Yeah, as opposed to going through either the risk of having my utilities turned off or the cost of having them turned off and back on, and then that's something I take up with my renter. And to Jody's point, they just gave up their deposit if that's the case.
Well, what I'm, what we're trying to eliminate is all this paperwork at City Hall. If we get a renter in, they don't pay their bill, we try and notify their owner, so by the time you're three or four months along, late charges, all the things that happen, we're trying to eliminate. But if you're a property owner and you're renting it as a long-term rental, you work it out and you add it into your deal.
Right.
The majority of these we're having are these short-term rentals, and you have a property manager, so you know what? They put it in, the owner says it's in the process, the bill goes to the property manager, whoever the bills get paid. We don't have this renter, well, I'll pay you next week, and then all of a sudden, you're three and four months behind, and then you're the owner. Well, I don't want to pay the late charges, I didn't, you know, it becomes a real hassle nightmare for the gals in the office, and we're trying to eliminate that part of it. If you're a property owner, add the water bill to your rent. Save us, these gals and us, when we're going, don't turn it off, don't turn it off, don't turn it, it just becomes a real nightmare of dealing with these sort of deals, and we're trying to eliminate that problem with the staff. We spend hours and hours with these rental properties in town.
What I was hearing was that this was becoming, this is an increasing problem because of the growth in the city, the number of rentals increasing or turning over, whatever it is that's going on, I know that I'm understanding that our staff is spending an inordinate amount of time trying to keep up with it. That's the purpose of this. So if we, if we need to clean it up, we can, and I think, you know, it could be that property managers are worked into the commercial tenant category.
Jody?
I guess my only concern with this is if you wrap up the water bill into the rent, with the cost of water in the summertime, and right now, tenants probably aren't really watering their lawns, but if they have free water, they might start, and then all of a sudden, the owner gets a $300 water bill.
If it's a very small lawn.
If it's a very small lawn, so, you know, then, I don't know, I just see a lot of problems with it, I guess. It's just not the way it's done anywhere that I know of, but I could be wrong, it could be going more this way. I think you're going to have a really steep learning curve with your tenant versus your landlord on it. I guess he.
Jim?
I was going to say, if you're the property owner, do you want them watering your lawn and keeping your place nice?
Not at all.
You make an agreement here, it's a deal, you know, we're going to water the lawn, we're going to do whatever, but I mean, that's between the tenant and the property owner. The changeover in tenants in this town, you might not believe. We've had people change the same thing to two in the same month.
I'd like to understand the short-term rental part of this conversation, because I heard that used, and I would think in the short-term rental, the bill is either being sent to the owner, or as Pete indicated, the agent, working on behalf of the owner.
That is, that's in there, that's worked in there, too. That's the thing, on these.
What are we doing now? We're not, we're not sending it to the person who comes and rents the VRBO for a week.
No, it goes to the homeowner or the property manager.
Or the agent?
So anyway, it obviously needs to be clarified, whatever it is. The rules and regs today interchangeably say customer and user, and there's no clarity around the relationship with the city and who actually ultimately has it, other than this one little line, you know, it does say in the rules and regs, the application to establish an account for water and wastewater service shall constitute agreement between the utility and the customer. Got it. Everything ultimately falls back to the customer as the property owner, if there is delinquency. But there are also people coming in today that are not the owners, and there are, I mean, there, maybe this is a problem that's been growing for some time, but it may be a cleanup of record, where it's not clear who the owner is or the customer.
I had a lot of years dealing with this, and I'll be more than happy to help both of you refine this and get it down to where it makes sense and it has teeth.
Thank you, Pete.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. Thank you.
Who's the other of the both?
He would point to you.
Okay. And I can assign that committee, and I will. Pete, Dave, Teresa. You're on the committee.
Game on.
Game on.
We'll clear it up, whatever it is that needs to be done, we'll try to improve it.
I don't think it will take very long, the amount of time we've already put into this.
And I do appreciate the effort. It was very evident that there's been a lot of time and effort put into it, a lot of effort.
Okay, so we're not going to move this ahead? We're going a little bit more, or do you think you can get it?
It could be, I mean, I don't know about everybody's availability, but I'd like to get it moving, at least by the end of the year. I don't think I got that far in the explanation, but if we're going to change this, if there, there's a lot of records upkeep. My understanding is the city does not have a database that can be switched overnight, it's a lot of data entry and cleanup, should it come to that, depending on what we, what we figure out.
And I saw specifically referenced in it that the goal was to have this done and in place by April 1st of 2022, so that gives us some time to get it right.
Right, and so, I mean, we don't want to wait till the beginning of April to discuss it again. We'd like to give the city some time, and as well landlords, to update any leases if it comes to that, if necessary, to get the estimates on what the water does cost per month, per property, and to roll that into their leases, and they knew those with their tenants, if they're not commercial, if that's where we end up.
Sure.
So, just making a comment, that I am a landlord, I own a property, and over the years, I have made arrangements with the tenants where there is a problem with the water, or the water gets expensive, because I want the property to be maintained, and I make agreements with them, have over many years, to split the cost of the water. Now, that's informal, I understand that, however, ultimately, whatever happens, as the property owner, the bill comes back to me. End of discussion.
Right.
If the city is owed something on the water bill, then I pay it. There's no, there's none of, there's nothing to discuss here, as I can see it.
Is that, that's clear in here?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's clear.
And you can call it a customer, or you can call it a landlord, or whatever you want to call it, but it's the person who owns the property and pays the taxes on the property is responsible for the utilities.
Right.
In the end. As far as I've concerned.
Yep, and whatever you work out with your tenants, it's your business to do it.
Exactly.
That's right.
And I don't want to get in a position of us telling landlords what their arrangements with their tenant has to be.
I don't think we're doing that.
No, no.
All right.
I don't see that in here at all.
You three get together, and Teresa, just kind of, I'll let you manage that part of it, and try to get it done.
Get on it.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we won't carry it forward? Unless you get it, unless you get it hammered out.
I'll let you know.
Let me know.
If there are other things issued, I mean, we do have some time, right?
Yes, we do.
Yep.
No. Any comments on this, you can reach one of the committee members, and we'll forward that way. Thank you, Teresa. We have a used city on land permit, Snow Creek Saloon, for, on 13th Street, for July. This is up for discussion, we'll open it up for discussion at the table. Teresa?
I know the only, the only adjacent property owner that is listed is China Garden, but I mean, there's, if you look at it, there's properties all around, businesses, both sides of the street closure across the way. To me, that means adjacent, so maybe that's my interpretation, but is there any lead-out from the other businesses surrounding this area?
No, I don't think so either.
I had the same comment, Teresa, that it just seems like there's one, just the China Garden, and there's many other, many other neighbors.
Right, I mean, the Roman is right there, right back door.
Yeah. Well, when they say adjacent, they, they're talking about where the street's closed, and the, and the Roman isn't on that street that's closed. So, I mean, it's kind of how our application is written right now, and whether or not that's something we want to change in the future, but this is what they've done in the past, so.
It is the same as what they've done in the past, they've just mentioned the China Gardens.
Yeah.
I think we're in a really tough spot with any application right now because of all the intense work that we're doing on events with the committee and the event that we just had last night, and all the feedback and comments that we've had. I think it's obvious to me, and I'm not going to speak for the other committee members, but it is something that we did talk about, about our permits, our applications needing to be updated and changed quite a bit. They're, they've been this way for a very long time, and as our town grows, we need to, I think there's, there's changes that need to be made. So I feel like it's hard to. So, I fe- I feel like it's hard to, without those changes in place yet, it seems like, why would, why would we have been doing all this work for, to just-
Pass through again.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, w- we are undergoing a project to review events, but if we have a time capsule to respond to applications, it's not the applicant's fault that we haven't finished our process, and they shouldn't be penalized for that.
Okay.
And I, just, just a moment, please. And I asked the city attorney if he could give us a definition of whether we are obligated to respond to the application within a certain period of time, and if we are, then it's our duty to the citizens to do that. Teresa?
Are, are you done, Pete?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so what I was wondering was, I understand this is a really awkward period of time, because we are in the middle of a process of revision, and we've got a lot of input from the community and a lot of sensitivities. Um, can we work in good faith? Can we, can we ask people that are, are requesting events, and, and gonna be the event coordinators slash owners, whatever, to work with the city and the community in good faith, having, you know, a summary of, of the comments that were made last night, and a lot of commonalities in what the community would like to see changed? Can we proceed and, and work with the events? I would ask the event planners to work with the city and the community in good faith, and maybe make some of those changes, even though the application doesn't state it, and we all know it's outdated and needs to be improved?
Sure. Um, I have two questions that I'd like to, to address to James. Um, the first one is, in our definition of adjacent and how we have historically done that, is it, my, my understanding is it's been directly adjacent, is always been our definition.
Yeah.
Um, so the second one with that, um, I, I am in, I'm in agreement with, um, Jody and Pete's comments, um, and, and having been part of this process for four years, and recognizing that this is one of those decisions that we make that falls under that umbrella of what they call a quasi-judicial, um, it means that we individually are liable for if we say yea or nay, and if we, if we were to say nay, we better be really comfortable that we're gonna be able to defend that as to the nay. And so what I do is I look at, at the laws that we have on the books, and, and, and if there are ordinances that change between now and then, I think it stands to reason that whatever ordinances are in effect at the time of the event, that they do need to be maintained and adhered to. Um, so my second question to James has to do with number four, where we say, "Discuss how noise from the vent will be addressed and mitigated," and they offer a, a really good suggestion, I think, as far as how they set it up, and, uh, so that it impacts, you know, they set it up so that it's impacting residential areas the least, but then they also say that the band will stop at midnight. My question is, with our current regulations, does it require a waiver to go past 10 o'clock and until midnight? Is that something that we have to grant? Or where, where are we from, from an adherence to the laws that are on the books when it comes to noise?
Um, well, quite frankly, um, probably any outdoor amplified concert, um, needs permission, you know, from a, from a noise standpoint. It's probably, whether it's quiet hours or not, it's liable to a point that it would go over the death mode level. Um, the Central Business District does have later hours till midnight, the rest of the city is 10 o'clock, Central Business District is midnight.
Okay. Would you, this is only slightly off-topic, but as we revisit this, would you think that a, a noise waiver would be something similar to an alcohol waiver, that we should consider as part of the process, or, or would you say we're good just sticking with what's on the books?
I think it'd be a good thing to add, it, it is something we talked about, the committees talked about as well, was kind of expanding on the noise a little bit more.
But at, but at this point, by your reading, this concert, if they're done at midnight, is within the ordinances that we have in place in the city?
Like I said, yes and no. It's like the, midnight is the quiet hours for downtown, um, is any amplified concert is still going to be at a death mode level at the property line, whether it's quiet hours or not, that exceed the, what's in the books. So, I guess that kind of gets back to your waiver question, that we should be more specific in regards to, and if they are doing amplified music, they probably should be asking for a waiver.
Tom?
I agree with, um, I agree with the discussion here, that we should not, in other words, if somebody makes a, a, an application in good faith, according to what we have set up as, as timelines and so on, the fact that we are in the process of revisiting this should not affect that, um, application, in my view. Um, I just, I just think that's not, that's not right.
Teresa?
I'll say it again, however, it wouldn't be unreasonable, I don't believe, to ask the event planner to work with the city and the community in good faith, knowing and, and toward, working towards some improvement, knowing that we are working on revisions and improvements. That, I would hope, I'm, I'm an optimist.
If I can restate what I think I heard you, sir, say, "It wouldn't be inappropriate for us to-"
Yeah.
"-ask the re- event coordinator to be cognizant of the community when returning how far to the right they turn the dial on the application."
Or to make some concessions ahead of time, knowing what the comments and, and the sensitivities are to the community.
Do we have a, um, finding by the city attorney regarding response to applications?
Yes. Danison, would you like to speak to that, please?
Mayor, members of the city council, in reviewing the ordinances, the statutes and the city code that's on the books, it does not appear, or the application material itself, it does not appear that there's a very specific timeframe on when the city has to respond back, especially if there's questions on interpretation. Um, for example, there's been some discussions tonight about adjacent landowners. I would refer the city council members to point number 13, that gives a pretty good definition of what adjacent owners are, and that talks about how adjacent owners are including people across the street from you, including people from just a corner to corner, city corner from you, it has a pretty good definition. But if there's any questions about the applications that are themselves, or just any questions that the city council would like to follow up on, I don't see any problem right now with the city council postponing, um, reviewing whether to push forward or to not push forward a application at this time. Obviously, the city can't stop forever, they have the decision in one way or the other, but at this point in time, if there's any questions, postponing is not a problem.
Dave?
Mayor, I'd just like to add one comment in that, and, um, and that is that historically, one of the issues has been, um, nobody has dibs on any particular given weekend or, or date or time or, or city property. And so one of the issues that we've had before is, as those come in, we have always, and, and, and we have been advised in the past, uh, over the last four years while I've been here, that we do need to respond, if not, uh, primarily just because if we don't, let's say we sit on this, and it's not, I realize this is just a discussion only, but if we don't respond at the first available time, we run the potential of suddenly having somebody else put in some request with the same event or the same time with the same piece of land use, um, and that could complicate our situation as well.
Tom?
This exact, uh, question came up at the table that I was, uh, coordinating last night, and it was brought to my attention, and I guess I knew this subconsciously, but a lot of these things, for example, in this particular case, finding people to do, to, to agree to play the music and so on, takes a lot of lead time. And, and arranging other things like security and so on and so on, takes a considerable lead time. So I don't think that it's fair to the people involved to put this off very long, if at all. I think we basically say, okay, we're gonna work on our, uh, regulations, but we, what we have going is what we have going at this point.
Teresa?
I'm thinking we have nine, nine-plus months ahead here. It's, it's not a wedding. Um, I'm not sure yet either, how much lead time is absolutely necessary, but, um, I know traditionally, Heather, you put yours in, um, that, uh, is it Charles, I'm sorry, um, had put his in almost at the same time, but, um, I'm, I'm thinking that it wouldn't be too harmful, and it, I'm not, I don't know the answer or not, just to wait another month or so.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
My information is that it, that the amount of lead time is considerable. There's a lot of competition to get the people that you want, the tools here, et cetera, et cetera. So I really, and, and my understanding is that this app, this application has come in, uh, within the prescribed timeline. So I think, I feel that we're obligated to, to, um, show with what we have.
You just speak.
Even without a calendar timeline, it is the city's obligation to act in good faith on the application. Otherwise, we're stringing these people out because of a project we have, not a project they have.
Yeah.
And, and we are, and, and we are processing it, we're talking about it right now, and what to do with it. But in addition to that, I mean, even as a pass-through, I have some genuine questions, like, according to that definition of adjacent, again, where are the points to point adjacent properties on that listing, not just the garden, right? So I read that definition, and it, it did explain to me that it should be all points from, you know, that, that one area, that one facing, right?
But if they're asked to clarify a point of their application, does not mean that we deny their whole application if they respond to the point we asked about.
Nobody here is saying we're denying it, we're just discussing it.
And we have in the past said that we're approving it pending, so in this particular case, that a lot of the parcel is the street, so if there is anything that is directly attached to that street, whether it be across the street or the side that's not there, I wouldn't have an issue if it was proposed that we're approving pending it, that, that again, and again, this is just a notification. Remember that neighbors do not have a veto right.
No.
It's just a notification. So if there's additional parties that need to be notified, we have frequently done that, or we've said pending a, a note from, from, um, emergency services, or pending insurance, if we haven't received insurance, although it's supposed to be there.
It's an opportunity for those properties or businesses to express any of their concerns and have them addressed before they're approved, before this is unapproved. I'd also like to hear of, um, you know, we normally hear from the police chief about what are the impacts? Do we have, I mean, is there something that we need to reexamine based on previous years, or is it still smooth money? I mean, these are normal, we, we've asked these questions before, we did this last year. So I'd still like to hear if there are any other impacts to police, um, fire, what was it, fire, there's a number on here.
Number seven, that's suggesting the route you're looking at?
Seven, right. So do we have input, impacts to police? I mean, the, the, the event planner is not the authority, doesn't know what those impacts are on police, fire, ambulance, it's their guess, in filling this out that there's no impact. We might hear differently from either one of those people responsible for those services.
Greg, do you wanna speak to that?
I, I guess it's situational dependent, the scale of the event itself, um, which event are we talking about?
We're talking about the Snow Creek one right now.
Okay. And that is a street closure?
Yeah.
For how long?
Three days.
Three days.
Twenty-four, uh, this is what, 11, uh, 1:00 to 12. 1:00 in the afternoon to 12.
And this is, they're, they're submitting this nine months in advance, if I'm tracking?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that is conditional?
Okay.
Doesn't mean it's necessary.
Yeah, I was gonna say, in, in terms of impacts to the police, what we've done is we've reduced our patrol units, and kept all of our mobile units going without a lot of officers on foot, so in terms of impacts to the police, just based solely on a street closure for a street dance, I, I wouldn't say we're, currently right now, wouldn't really impact my department with how we normally handle things for those events.
Teresa?
Is that unless there's, or assuming there's no other events, ad hoc, things that happen throughout the city?
I'm sorry?
And that's assuming there's no other ad hoc events or situations in the city at the same time.
Correct.
So if something should happen, would the police department be caught short or, or, or stretched?
You'll need to have one additional officer tracking this young lady through the week, just make sure additional problems don't show up.
Firework, firework.
Again, it, it's called for service dependent, it's situational dependent, how stretched thin we are. It, it's tough to say, I'd have to sit down and see.
How does it go next?
For which event?
Snow Creek.
Snow Creek. No issues?
Thank you, good to know.
Yeah.
Mayor, I would add my voice to the folks who have indicated that they think it's appropriate that we move forward for this, and, and have an actual discussion, and, and bring it up and vote on it if the next opportunity.
I guess I'll, uh, take a head nod if we move this forward or not.
I'd like-
It's like four, so we'll move this forward. Any comments from the public? Yes?
I guess all I have to say, and Pete, I-
Say your name and-
I'm Phil Lardinger, uh, too, excuse me if I don't say that, I'm having a very big battle with me to go right now, so. Anyway, I can tell you, as far as planning an event, there's a lot of discussion about it, we plan up to two years in advance. So for somebody to apply nine months in advance is not out of line, I feel at all. I do think that there, you need to, even if you're acting on rebuilding, how you're gonna handle these, I do not think it's fair to the people that are putting on these to pay the penalty of waiting or having to, as you said, if they're work with, you and I both know that whatever's in writing is what's gonna get done. And that is, for my estimation, is what always happens. And like I said, we will always be planning a year to two years in advance, um, because most of these promoters and everybody else, a lot of money goes out, it takes almost a year of marketing or more to get that back. So please keep that in mind. I, I understand that there needs to be changes, or we want changes, but in the same sense, please don't hold these promoters out, or parades, or anything else, because we don't have a decision right now.
Any other comments from the public?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, uh, this is, uh, David Lehen, uh, that's L-E-H-N-H-R-R, uh, uh, commenting, I'm, I'm calling in remotely, and I just would ask the city council not to think that they have to rubber stamp an entire application because of concerns about the time needed for someone to hold an event. You have to put red light first, in, in my opinion, and i- if, if someone had made a responsible application, or they considered all adjacent landowners, which they obviously haven't with this application, and if, if they looked for a, a reasonable ending time for the loud music, which they haven't done, then you could move forward. But I think you have to put red light first, and, uh, and do some, and make some modifications in this application, uh, perhaps if they had made a more responsible, uh, application, it wouldn't be an issue. So the onus is really on them, and I would put red light before concerns about how much lead time an irresponsible application needs. Thank you.
Do you reside in the city or outside the city, David?
Uh, like the event organizers, I live outside- Like the event organizers, I live outside the city. I live just south of Red Lodge.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
My name's Rhett Smith. I'm a resident. I live up on the golf course. And I look back at the, um, the January 12th, 2021 agenda. And this is for Heather's application I'm referring to. But there it is. There's the agenda item for, to consider Heather's application. And then on that application, it's in the, the packet of materials for that January 12th meeting is the date received on that application was October 24th, 2020. So that's whatever, three months there. The, I understand that business owners want to move ahead, that make plans. I understand that a hundred percent. Yet last year, there was whatever, three months in between. So that's one point. And the other point in general is that working in good faith is a huge part of the city council on businesses and citizens. Undo burden comes to mind, mentioned before. And trying to work in good faith is, is huge. So that's one, some reasons why I would like to consider. And I believe January, February is the date for new resolutions and applications. So I throw all that out there. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rhett. Any other public comments? Public comment? We'll move that forward to our next meeting. Houston City Own Land Permits, Bone Daddy's Property Northern Rodeo Grounds, July 2022, discussion. Discussion at the table. Dave?
I had a question for the event owner regarding number two. It was talking about discussed, proposed, trying to make crowd control and safety measures. And they indicate, as, as previous did, that they are providing their own security. And I noticed in the comments that it said that there was a local police department walkthrough. My question is, is that a, is that a request? Or is that just an acknowledgement that they may, that they may opt to drive through occasionally?
Go ahead, Heather.
Heather Quinn, I'm just saying that the police department do go through and they are, they welcome, of course, to go through whenever they like.
But it, it's not a specific request for police resources. Thank you.
But we obviously invite them.
Teresa.
Uh, there's a more of a question for Heather, if that's all right. I know on the application, I, I believe last year it was unknown or the estimate was a lot lower for camping. Is this number of a thousand based on last year volume or not?
I truly, we never know how many people are going to, is that what you're asking? How many people are going to show up? Yeah, we don't know.
For camping specifically?
Yeah. I still don't ever know how many, but I just figure a thousand is going to cover it. It could be six hundred, it could be eight hundred, it could be twelve hundred. It really is less than a thousand.
Did you estimate it based on what you saw last year?
I don't, I didn't count until maybe came in last year. I didn't, I don't go around and count.
Nobody knows. Yeah.
I also want to apologize, I didn't mean to invite the police department. I'm just saying that this public, they can go through anytime.
I, I just wanted to clarify because I think there may be occasions and events where people do specifically request police resources. You know, if I go to bigger cities and concerts and stuff, they do make those requests. And those requests are generally accommodated, but they also generally come with the bill. But I didn't guess that that was your, your request, but I just wanted to clarify it.
Discussion at the table.
For me, another question for Heather, if she doesn't mind. Heather, for camping, when you say that you're not clear on how many people come, can you help me understand what the camping fees are? I know that you pay the city for the use of the city owned land.
Twenty dollars, twenty dollars a night per person. Our security is to take the money. So I truly, most of the time, never opt there. I'll go through once through the beginning and then during the vote, yell itself on Sunday. So the security takes that all in. There's twenty people that are, about twenty, could be more than that, plus their wives come in. So they, as we said, taking all of the dollars for the camping and go between the camping and cleaning the porta potties and the wash stations and the shoplifts and all that. So I don't know.
So then they just turn the money over to you?
Yes.
But don't tell you. So it's very just a good base thing of.
No, there's no cash. They, they don't, no. Just open an envelope, money bag, and then it gets put in a safe. So we trust them one hundred percent. And I can give you the information all about them as well. They're an organization that does things. Okay, thank you.
Teresa.
So that just leads me to another question for Heather, if that's all right.
Yes.
Heather, if, um, you don't know how many people to expect. I mean, do you order the porta potties for us there?
Yes, we do.
Based on what numbers?
Based on historic numbers and what works every year. So we bring in about thirty-two porta potties up there, plus we rent the rodeo grounds. We have their bathrooms as well as the showers.
But now you don't have numbers?
For the actual people that are camping, I do not.
So the, the porta potties are not for the campers?
The porta potties are for the campers. They're specifically laid out along the road, between the road and the tent. And again, the security decides how those are going to go in and they're delivered and they're dropped off exactly where they need to be, as well as the garbage can, the wash stations.
So it's just a.
It's just, historically has been done. I don't know what year the porta potties were, were added. I have no idea what was done. Twenty years ago.
But you order them.
We order them, yes.
And you don't know how many you ordered because you don't know how many campers?
No. We order thirty-two porta potties for up at the rodeo ground, or up at the city property, and seven for in town. And that is to store it.
So no matter what numbers, you just do that every year?
We do it every year. Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So are they full on, you know, Thursday night and not on Sunday? I don't, I don't know.
I just didn't understand. You just did the same number every year?
And it, yes, and it adds to it. So sometimes there's more use than others, I assume, but I don't know.
Discussion at the table. Carry this forward. Okay, we'll carry it forward. Any comments from the public? Comments from the public?
Uh, I'd like to comment.
And who is it?
I live at seven twenty Hagan Avenue North.
Okay.
And I'd like to know if the eight percent bed tax and Montana sales tax is, uh, is charged to the campers per site? And also the four percent Red Lodge resort tax?
So we do four percent resort tax on, on the camping and, um, and our total, I can only tell you, I don't know what we pay. I don't know what we, I didn't bring those numbers. But yes, we do. We do pay the tax on the camping.
So, okay, so you pay that eight percent to the state also for the, uh, for the camping, which is charged to every campsite, even those that are state owned in Montana?
We base it on the gross income.
She says they base it on the gross income.
Okay. And ordinance nine eleven, Red Lodge ordinance nine eleven, requires that the city council make sure that the fees that are charged are comparable to what's charged at area local campgrounds. Is that, is that true? I mean, is that, is that happening? Because I think the fees are between like thirty-seven and forty dollars per tent site at like the KOA or Perry's, plus the tax, plus the eight percent state tax.
Go ahead, Heather.
Um, yes, so what we're renting from the city is a piece of ground. And then we go ahead and we add the porta potties and the wash stations. And I went over these numbers a couple meetings ago. Um, but so, so that cost is about six thousand dollars. Plus in addition, of course, we use the rodeo ground bathrooms, which pumping for that's about seven hundred. Our, and then we have our insurance, our garbage and dumpsters is about three thousand dollars. Our amenities, which is shampoo, trash bags, toilet papers, paper towels, is about nine hundred dollars. Um, I might be missing something, but that kind of gives you round numbers. We're still not a KO at that point, but we do add those comforts as far as that.
That's to answer the question though, because the ordinance calls that your fees for the campers should be comparable so that you're not, um, you don't have an unfair advantage over the private campgrounds or the state run campgrounds in the area.
This, this is a comment period, not a question and answer. So if you want to make a comment, we'll be.
That's not a comment, and it just doesn't appear to be like it's, uh, it's following the, the city ordinance. And also if you have some historical data, you would, you could get that by how much tax you've paid every year. I mean, if you're charging it. So anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comments? Public comments? Let's move on to the Red Lodge Park Trees Recreation Board Annual Report.
Mayor, please don't pull. Um, so I'm pretty excited to share a couple of highlights from our annual report. It was included in the agenda and it is pretty lengthy. They got a lot done this year, which is really exciting. I definitely expected it to be along the report next year with, with what we've already achieved in the last couple of months. So, um, just to kind of start out, to go through through, I'm on the front page. I just kind of brought up the board mission, what, you know, these seven volunteers are responsible for. And then, you know, one did that first nine, that ten hours a week. So taking care of parks facilities, not the resources, open space, they do a lot. And I can say they definitely put in a lot of time to, um, to raise funds and implement maintenance projects for parks throughout the year. For anyone that is curious as to what kind of guidance the park board, you can look at ordinance nineteen and nineteen, and they kind of lay out a little bit clearer of what the park board usually provides for. Just a kind of little inspirational quote from the Fourteenth Dalai Lama. It's our collective and individual responsibility to preserve and tend to the environment in which we all live. And so that's really important, especially for urban forests. About a hundred and forty-one million acres of, of forests is an urban environment. So especially with all the protected lands, protected lands around us, this is really important that we make sure that our environmental resources are healthy. So with our urban forestry, so with our cost share tree program, we increased for the first time in a couple of years, how many trees were planted through a historic twenty-five, twenty-six cost share trees throughout the summer. And we already have a full interest list for next year. So one of the discussions we've had is can we expand our cost share tree program in the future? And what kind of sustainable funding can we get for that? We became the City USA, as you all remember. And so we, with that, we planted three pollinator habitats, one including just outside of City Hall here, a little pioneer habitat. We think, we've begun to diversify our tree diversity in parks. And so one of the, the plans that really is going to start guiding us more in our urban forestry is the Montana Forest Action Plan. I'm in looking at how our, our Red Lodge Urban Forest Management Plan and our Montana Forest Action Plan can work with each other. And so a lot of cities in Montana have, have homogenous forests, a lot of the same age, a lot of the same four or five species. And so we're going to try to work more on bringing in more diversity in age of species in our forests. We became a tree city for the twenty-first year. We've been a tree city since nineteen ninety-nine. We had quite a few Arbor Day celebrations, planting trees with Boys and Girls Club, students and volunteers. We improved some of our public tree care, so we fertilized trees along the redways this year for the first time in several years, which is really important for those boulevard environments because they can be pretty nutrient poor. And we, we did several park cleanups where we picked up trash, different tree clearing, some brush clearing and more. Our recreational facilities, we started doing upgrades of the basketball courts. That kind of got postponed to really this fiscal year, but ten new goals are at the basketball courts thanks to funding from Land Club, Pride Citizens and Park Sports Fund. We do want to continue those improvements next summer as well. The volleyball team did some upgrades to the volleyball courts and they reported back on some things that we need to look into doing for next year to prevent grass encroachment into the court where they continually have to fill the pole grass out. So we've talked with Brian, our parks person, about how we can make maintenance of volleyball, volleyball courts there. Obviously, if they wanted the completion of Hell Roaring State Park, it seems like so long ago, but that was in this, this fiscal year. Obviously, a really tremendous, a tremendous project that got completed and Kevin Blonk, a former park chairman, was a real crucial part of that as well. We began assessment improvement and improvement for our tennis courts. So there is a big hole in the tennis court. We just recently kind of cut that out, cut out half of a court and repaired it. So it's flat now, so people can't roll their ankle inside of that hill. And we are going to start fundraising and looking at replacing the courts completely in the next few years. And then the disc golf course was upgraded as well. More holes were put in, some holes that were creating erosion on the hillside were removed. So hopefully they won't continue to erode and create any sediment solution in the river. Education and outreach, one of the things that we're going to try to do in future annual reports is just a chart of different events that we've attended or events that have happened. For example, the library hosted a pollinator series, education series over the summer. And so they plugged in a lot of the City USA materials with that. And so we're going to try to track better our education and outreach opportunities. So that's kind of laid out on that page. Already we have, we've done a lot. We've already spoken to every single elementary student, talking about urban trees. So they came out for tree planting and kind of overwhelmingly came out and told stories. We thought maybe a class would come, but every single classroom came out. And so we talked to every single student already about the importance of trees in our Central Business District and why we should plant trees. Volunteer contributions, obviously the park board puts in a whole lot, but there's so many hours that are unaccounted for. The ones that we had reported, we had over fourteen hundred volunteer hours. Most of the hours that aren't accounted for are some of, from some of our user groups that don't report back how many, or don't track how many volunteer hours they have. And also just, you know, people who go to the dog park and pick up dog waste. I know there's, there's a property owner that lives across from Lion Park that walks the park every day and picks up trash. So just trying to capture, you know, the value of the community and the pride of people in the community to keep these spaces green, that's definitely something we don't take for granted. And we recognize that without them, you know, our parks might be a little bit messier. So that was real quick. Thank you. We do have, we will have one. We do have, we will have one board position opening up as our chair, Ruth, Lisa. So if anyone's interested during the park course, we're a fun group, and we're really gonna miss all the time and energy Ruth puts in to talking with various community members and leaders. And it's gonna be a hard, a hard year to fill. Ruth, do you have anything to add?
We don't. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
I just want to say thanks, Ruth. I was on the park board several years ago, and we've been there for a really long time. And she puts a lot of effort into the, into that board. So it does a lot of volunteer hours and has a big heart for it. So I agree, it will be a pretty big pot to fill.
Yes.
So thanks, Ruth, for all you've done over many, many years.
Okay.
I have a question on page eight. It's not numbered, but it's in between page seven and nine, which are numbered. It's the list of the MOUs.
Oh, yeah.
I can't help but notice that all but one of those technically is end of life as of this year. What, and maybe this is a question directed toward James, but what is our, what is our need for action on those? Are they written so that they are perpetual in the absence of termination, or is there actually required to re-put them in place?
I haven't looked at them in a long time. I can't remember if they just keep going on after five years. I know the parks board has looked at them and had those groups in, and there's been work done on many of them.
I know a couple of the MOUs that I've seen even outside of parks board will, will, you know, go get past, you know, maybe a few months after the expiration, but they say this is fact dated to the expiration date. But we have renewed a couple, had a couple of ones signed, and we are working on the rest of them that need to be updated. Lion's Park is done.
Yeah, Lion's Park.
That's the big one. Yeah, and I know Rotary Park is, I think, that he's gonna sign pretty soon, or if she hasn't already. So that one's done. That one just got updated.
So table is outdated, but there may be some that still require action?
Yes, yes. Because that's as of July.
Any other questions?
Well, thanks for your continued support. We're excited for all your budget this year.
We'll move on to public comment. Once again, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and if you live in the city or outside the city, open public comment period. Public comments? Public comments? We're done here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.